Great reception of the Carter County Board of Commissioners for Monday on November 1st, 2013. Now the order. Before we go any further, there are no pile or anything. Then we have a moment of silence perhaps for our good friend and colleague, fellow Commissioner DeBree. Amen. Thank you all. Now, call over, Mr. DeBree.
Peter Peters.
Here.
Nancy Brown.
Here.
Joel Street.
Present.
Richard Winters.
Here.
Ronnie Cribbitt.
Here.
Mary Sees.
Present.
Charles Van Cannon.
Present.
Elsie Testor.
Yes.
Steve Ray.
Present.
Tom Mallow.
Here.
Joyne Lichtenstein.
Present.
Charlie Bates.
Here.
Bobby Deed.
Present.
Ian Aron.
Here.
Steve James.
Here.
John Lewis.
Here.
Sonia Feller.
Present.
Russell Cott.
Here.
Scott Sands.
Here.
Bill Armstrong. Pat Hee.
Present.
Robert Goff.
Here.
Von Cannon.
Present.
Elsie Testor.
Yes.
Steve Ray.
Present.
Tom Mallow.
Here.
Joyne Lichtenstein.
Present.
Charlie Bates.
Here.
Bobby Deed.
Present.
Ian Aron.
Here.
Steve James.
Here.
John Lewis.
Here.
Sonia Feller.
Present.
Russell Cott.
Here.
Scott Sands.
Here.
Bill Armstrong. Pat Hee.
Present.
Robert Goff.
Here.
Von Cannon.
Any other comments? And now if I may open me prior by Elsie Testor and the President of the League at St. John Street.
Thank you, Governor DeWitt, with my heartfelt hearts and thank you for your goodness and your love and your mercy and your wonderful works to the children of me and how you watch over us and protect us. We thank you today for your guidance, your light that you shine in our life, your help that you give us each day. What we ask today is we conduct business that we realize that everybody that we have brought to make decisions on is your children, Lord, and you love them as well as any of yours. We ask today, Lord, that you guide us and help us do that, Lord, and it will be pleasing unto you. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Teaching salute pledge. Our pleasure allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, we'll enter into our public comments section. We're having public comments. Mr. Chairman.
At this time, I wish to yield my time to Mr. Charles Van Cannon.
I'm afraid that is not what I want. That's my boy. We have a Commissioner comments till the end. You're welcome to finish your two minutes if you'd like.
Is there any legal reasons that I may have to yield my time to Mr. Van Cannon?
Yes, because that's on Commissioner comments. There be any other public comments? Sir.
Yes, my name is Randy Payne. I live in 279 Clayville, Elizabethan County. And I'm here in reference to our contractor inspection. I've been a state contractor for 40 years, and I think that we ought to bring our inspection back home. Of course, we've had problems, but 48 hours is a long time to get an inspection. Man, it's been super good to work with us, but it's just kind of strung out when you need to get something done and you have to... The jobs ain't that plentiful right now, and you kind of have to keep the job a-going. And I'd like to see it come back home to our... We're planning these being down here in this office, and if they're qualified to do this inspection, I would love to see it back down here where we can get things done and no holdups.
Thank you for that.
Any other public comments? Let's see, none, then move on. Acceptance of minutes from previous meeting. Do I have most to approve?
I'd like to say it.
We have a motion by Ms. Flores, second by Mr. Chambers. Any discussion? All the table say aye.
Aye.
Although... No reason why.
Deborah B., Sandra, Cynthia, DeParker, Damon and Carter, Wayne Hodge, Candy Bear, Chris McGabb, Christopher and Powell, Greg Duckert, James T. Stout, Patty Trivitt, Dom Sheffield, Brandon Schell, Andrew Don Oliver, and none of the package, Margaret E. Romans and Daniel J. Wilson.
I make a motion to accept.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Trivitt, second by Mr. Testor to accept vote. Any discussion? All the table say aye.
Aye.
Although, Mr. Trivitt. Now, the condition of elected and appointed officials and guests, would you all please stand? Thank you all for your support. Carter County, my report, Mr. Tom Enson was called out for a family medical emergency because he was, but he'll be happy to be on our agenda for next time. So, Mr. Mayor.
Three-plus years ago, the Carter County inmate garden was nothing more than an idea. Today is a working model that annually provides 80-plus inmates with excellent opportunities to increase their knowledge of gardening. It also serves as an immediate source of stress relief, pride and workmanship, and a sound basis which these individuals can develop specialized skills and a work ethic that is so vitally important for success on re-entering society. There were over 400 bushels of fresh fruits and vegetables with a market value of over $8,000 harvested during the 2012 season. These foods were used to complement the nutritional meals served in the detention center and offset the ever-rising cost of daily operations. In this phase, the inmates benefited significantly in that they are trained in kitchen operations, food preparation, and food safety. Last year, the county received a $1,500 grant from the Elizabethan Carter County Community Foundation. The funds were used to purchase a rototiller, components for an irrigation system, and assorted seeds. These additions helped tremendously in expanding the overall scope of the project. On August 14th, I submitted an application to the foundation for a $2,000 grant. On October the 16th, Michael McLamrock, present CEO of the foundation, advanced correspondence, notifying me that the board had approved this year a grant in the maximum amount of $2,000. Each of you was provided a copy of the letter. We received it after the packets had been dispersed. Therein, he outlined the requirements that must be met. Eighty percent of these grant funds will be dispersed to the county on November the 13th. The county commission, however, must first approve acceptance of the monies for the terms and conditions outlined. So, Mr. Chairman, a motion is now in order to accept these monies with the understanding that the funds are to be used for the sole purpose of expanding the jail garden program.
So, move back.
Motion by Mr. Brown, second by Mr. Testor to accept these funds for the expansion of the jail garden program. Any discussion?
This is the second year we've awarded funds for the Sheriff Garden, and I'm proud to be a part of this organization. A notice on the back and also a flyer that I gave you concerning Strum Fest. I understand that Si from Duck Dynasty may be there. May be there, and he may not. Jace will be there from Duck Dynasty and Ilman from Las Vegas Pawn Stars, as scruffy as he is. Now, somebody said, "Are you sure?" I said, "All I know is they look like."
Call over.
I've got tickets, by the way.
Peter Peters. Ah. Lawrence Hodge. Nancy Brown. Ah. Joel Street. Ah. Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Cribbitt. Ah. Mary Sees. Ah. Charles Van Cannon. Aye. Elsie Testor. Aye. Steve Ray. Ah. Tom Mallow. Ah. Joyne Lichtenstein. Aye. Charlie Bates. Aye. Bobby Deed. Ah. Ian Aron. Ah. Steve James. Ah. John Lewis. Ah. Sonia Feller. Ah. Russell Cott. Ah. Scott Sands. Ah. Bill Armstrong. Pat Hee. Aye. Robert Goff. Aye.
All eyes, Mr. Trivitt.
Just to reinforce what Commissioner Von Cannon has previously stated, Elizabethan Carter County Community Foundation is a very important part of our community, so if each of you, your families can attend, be in attendance at Strum Fest, and support that organization, it would be great. Also, on your tables in front of you, you'll see a mailer to each of you with the exception of Mr. Lewis. These are district maps or commissioned district maps. Those were provided by the Office of Local Government. Mr. Lewis picked his up in Chattanooga, and that's why yours is not there. So, these were provided, and we got those on Thursday as well, otherwise it would've been packed. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Many courts and recommendations. Mr. Sisk, please.
Budget Committee met this month, and I have a list of amendments that we'll go over. First on the... First item I have is a motion to accept donations totaling $300 for the animal shelter. We need to approve this so they can put it in the budget. I make a motion that we do so.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Sisk, second by Ms. Brown, to accept these donations for the animal shelter. Any discussion? Call over.
Peter Peters. Ah. Lawrence Hodge. Nancy Brown. Ah. Joel Street. Ah. Richard Winters. Aye. Ronnie Cribbitt. Ah. Mary Sees. Aye. Charles Van Cannon. Aye. Elsie Testor. Aye. Steve Ray. Aye. Tom Mallow. Aye. Joyne Lichtenstein. Aye. Charlie Bates. Aye. Bobby Deed. Ah. Ian Aron. Aye. Steve James. Ah. John Lewis. Ah. Sonia Feller. Ah. Russell Cott. Ah. Scott Sands. Ah. Bill Armstrong. Pat Hee. Aye. Robert Goff. Aye.
All eyes, Mr. Trivitt.
Next item is General Fund 101, amendment number two, 16 items, total of $78,799.37. This is zero coming from fund balance, zero. Make a motion that we approve of these amendments. You have a bis calling it.
Second.
Before you...
I have a motion by Mr. Sisk, second by Ms. Brown, to approve General Fund 101, item number two, 1 through 16. Any discussion? Call over.
Peter Peters. Ah. Lawrence Hodge. Nancy Brown. Ah. Joel Street.
Because I am employed in Carter County, I have conflict with the municipal council about the voting. I have a card for arguing my vote, and my conscience and my obligation to my constituents and citizens. This body represents aye.
Richard Winters. Aye. Ronnie Cribbitt. Ah. Mary Sees. Aye. Charles Van Cannon. Aye. Elsie Testor. Aye. Steve Ray. Aye. Tom Mallow. Aye. Joyne Lichtenstein. Aye. Charlie Bates. Ah. Bobby Deed. Ah. Ian Aron. Ah. Steve James. Ah. John Lewis. Ah. Sonia Feller. Ah. Russell Cott. Ah. Scott Sands. Ah. Bill Armstrong. Pat Hee. Aye. And Robert Goff. Aye.
All eyes, Mr. Trivitt.
The next item is General Purpose School Fund 141, amendment number two, two items, Zero coming from fund balance. I make a motion that we approve this amendment.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Sisk, second by Ms. Brown, to approve General Purpose School Fund 141, amendment two, two items. Any discussion?
Where's this $487,000 of interest, Mr. Sisk?
If you'll look in your list of amendments, it's on the second page. The $424,971 was received from the state. It's going for technology purchases. That's for the park assessments. $62,959.46 is going to Clavon High School to purchase mobile computer labs.
Any other discussion? Call over.
Peter Peters. Ah. Lawrence Hodge. Nancy Brown. Ah. Joel Street.
Because I am employed in Carter County, I have conflict with municipal council about the voting. I have a card for arguing my vote, and my conscience and my obligation to my constituents and citizens. This body represents aye.
Richard Winters. Aye. Ronnie Cribbitt. Ah. Mary Sees. Aye. Charles Van Cannon. Aye. Elsie Testor. Aye. Steve James. Steve Ray. Aye. Tom Mallow. Aye. Joyne Lichtenstein. Aye. Charlie Bates. Aye. Bobby Deed. Ah. Ian Aron. All eyes, Mr. Trivitt.
I have a reflection of minutes that I am agreeing a conflict of interest. I like that it was in that in the minutes, being an employee of Carter County's school system, having a conflict of interest, I hold out.
Steve James. Ah. John Lewis. Ah. Sonia Feller. Ah. Russell Cott. Ah. Scott Sands. Ah. Bill Armstrong. Pat Hee. Aye. And Robert Goff. Aye.
All eyes, Mr. Trivitt.
Next item, General Purpose School Fund 141, amendment number three, two items, total Zero coming from fund balance. I make a motion that we approve this amendment.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Sisk, second by Mr. Chambers, to approve General Purpose School Fund 141, amendment number three, two items. Any discussion? Call over.
Peter Peters. Ah. Lawrence Hodge. Nancy Brown. Ah. Joel Street.
Because I am employed in Carter County, I have conflict with municipal council about the voting. I have a card for arguing my vote, and my conscience and my obligation to my constituents and citizens. This body represents aye.
Richard Winters. Aye. Ronnie Cribbitt. Ah. Mary Sees. Aye. Charles Van Cannon. Aye. Elsie Testor. Aye. Steve Ray. Aye. Tom Mallow. Aye. Joyne Lichtenstein. Aye. Charlie Bates. Aye. Bobby Deed. Ah. Ian Aron.
I have a same statement reflecting the minutes. I read a conflict of interest statement, being an employee of Carter County's school system, having a conflict of interest, I hold out.
Steve James. Ah. John Lewis. Ah. Sonia Feller. Ah. Russell Cott. Aye. Scott Sands. Aye. Bill Armstrong. Pat Hee. Aye. And Robert Goff. Aye.
All eyes, Mr. Trivitt.
Next item is Federal Projects Fund 142, amendment number one, two items, total $63,710.16. I make a motion that we approve this amendment, zero coming from fund balance.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Sisk, second by Mr. Katt, to approve Federal Projects Fund 142, amendment number two, two items. Any discussion? Call over.
Peter Peters. Ah. Nancy Brown. Ah. Joel Street.
Because I am employed in Carter County, I have conflict with municipal council about the voting. I have a card for arguing my vote, and my conscience and my obligation to my constituents and citizens. This body represents aye.
Richard Winters. Aye. Ronnie Cribbitt. Ah. Mary Sees. Aye. Charles Van Cannon. Aye. Elsie Testor. Aye. Steve Ray. Aye. Tom Mallow. Aye. Joyne Lichtenstein. Aye. Charlie Bates. Aye. Bobby Deed. Ah. Ian Aron.
Same statement, being an employee of Carter County's school system, having a conflict of interest, I hold out.
Steve James. Ah. John Lewis. Ah. Sonia Feller. Ah. Russell Cott. Ah. Scott Sands. Ah. Bill Armstrong. Pat Hee. Aye. And Robert Goff. Aye.
All eyes, Mr. Trivitt.
Federal Projects Fund 142, amendment two, two items, total $567,862.81. Zero coming from fund balance. I make a motion that we approve this amendment.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Sisk, second by Mr. Chambers, to approve Federal Projects Amendment 142, amendment two. Any discussion? Call over.
Peter Peters. Ah. Lawrence Hodge. Nancy Brown. Ah. Joel Street.
Because I am employed in Carter County, I have conflict with municipal council about the voting. I have a card for arguing my vote, and my conscience and my obligation to my constituents and citizens. This body represents aye.
I'm sorry, Joel. Aye. Would you pass, Nancy? Richard Winters. Aye. Ronnie Cribbitt. Ah. Mary Sees. Aye. Charles Van Cannon. Aye. Elsie Testor. Aye. Steve Ray. Aye. Tom Mallow. Aye. Joyne Lichtenstein. Aye. Charlie Bates. Aye. Bobby Deed. Ah. Ian Aron.
To reflect the same statement, being an employee of Carter County's school system, having a conflict of interest, I hold out.
Steve James. Ah. John Lewis. Ah. Sonia Feller. Ah. Russell Cott. Ah. Scott Sands. Ah. Bill Armstrong. Pat Hee. Aye. And Robert Goff. Aye. Nancy Moon. Change of vote. One pass. You will pass.
One pass first, aye, Mr. Trivitt.
Okay, next time, the welfare committee came before the budget committee, and the discussion was the purchase of two AED machines. They recommended that this body try to do that, to place them in the courthouse here and in the annex, I believe that was. So, Mrs. Loach was going to research and possibly try to locate a grant that would help us in purchasing of these machines.
I talked to the EMA Director, Andrew Worley, on Tuesday morning. He verified for me that they had already looked into the grant possibility, and they had applied for a grant with AEDgrant.com. This is really not a grant per se, it's more like a discounted purchasing option. They get with the vendors directly, and they offer discounts on their products. So, that original application expired on September the 22nd. So, we contacted them, and they have extended that date to November the 18th. And to get the AED that was recommended by the EMS, as well as in a cabinet with an alarm, it's $1,439.76. I also spoke to the sales representative from Zoll Manufacturers, that's the people that make the AED machine that was recommended. She gave me a quote straight from them for the AED with the cabinet. It's actually called a school package. It has the notification symbols to put on the building and the cabinet to put it in, the carrier to carry it in. It's like a complete package. To buy it directly from Zoll, it was $1,550 per unit. The sales rep also notified me of a possibility for a grant through the restaurant chain, Firehouse Subs. But in order to qualify for that grant, you have to have a restaurant within 60 miles of your location. Our nearest restaurant is 71 Miles. So, unless we can get someone to open up Firehouse Subs here anywhere close, we're out for that grant. But she also notified me that if they don't have enough applicants, they do this quarterly, if they do not have enough applicants, they'll open it up to people outside of those areas. So, we're still on hold for that, but they do that in December. They close the application period and start awarding those. So, that can be up to $20,000 for equipment like that, which would be more than we would ever need for two AED machines. That's not a possibility as of today, but that's still something that we're looking at to see if we could get that in order to get more purchases for AED machines. And we know that two will not satisfy all of our needs, but it's our most demanding needs. I also submitted an application to Mountain State Health Alliance for financial assistance. They are very open to helping local areas to improve the health of their citizens. So, I've submitted that application. I have not heard back, but I have submitted that. Director Worley contacted EMS to see if they were aware of any grants that they might have, and they were not. They stated that all grants that they were aware of dried up about four years ago, so they didn't know of any. And I've also talked to the Director of Coordinated School Help for our school system. She is out on medical leave and will return next week, and will hopefully have more information on that. So, as far as finding a grant, I did not have any luck so far finding a grant that we qualified for, but we do have a discounted purchasing program that we could take care of if you want to do that today. If you want to wait and see if any of these other options pan out, we can do that as well, but that's what my research found.
Mr. Street, a question from Ms. Deloach. Do we have these in our... We have them out of our schools, don't we? Or just some...
I did go to the Board of Education today, and I noticed that they have it with the cabinet with the alarm. It's the exact same machine that we were going to purchase. I mean, it is at the Board of Education building, but as far as each school, I'm not sure that every school has one yet, but I know a majority of them do.
There's a list in the packet for each commissioner that lists the ones that are available and as far as...
[inaudible]
That's the ones that...
So, it's...
Let me say, that's the ones that have been reported to 911. There is a law in the state of Tennessee, if you have these AED machines, they have to be registered. It is the law, they have to be registered through 911.
I guess, what is your recommendation, Mr. Sisk?
I guess we're open for discussion and ideas about the possible urgency of getting those machines in place while waiting for a grant of some sort, some assistance with the purchase.
Mr. Loach, I go ahead and make a motion that if we take it out of fund balance, about what we need to use for the courthouse.
That would be it.
Total, the lowest priced ones that I have found, to buy two of those, that'd be $2,880, purchase those two.
Well, that's our most... What was the original price?
I think we had roughly $2,000 set aside, it's what we thought it would cost, but this grant has, or discounted program has offered it at that. So, we can get almost $3,000 you can get two.
I'll second this motion, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion by Mr. Lewis, second by Mr. Trivitt, to approve $2,800...
$80.
$80 from the...
In the sage one lie, I think it would be worth.
From the fund balance for this discussion, Mr. Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, you do have some possibilities, I mean, and...
Um, so, you do have some possibilities, I mean, and, and, I mean, I'm for this, I'd like to see the courthouse have, uh, uh, but would it, how, could we just do one and try to get the grant for the other? I mean, what would be, uh, how mobile are these things, or do they have to stay?
That's the point of them, is they're supposed to be mobile, they come, um, from what I've seen, they're about like that, have a handle, they come in a carrying case, and what we wanted to make sure was, and I talked to the sales rep, and she advised me, she didn't care what kind of cabinet we bought, but we want a cabinet that if someone is tampering with that, because we all know that curious people may tamper something they shouldn't be, that it'll sound an alarm, that we know that that's being used, that will help us if there is a need, it'll alert everybody that, hey, there's a need for that, or if somebody's tampering with it, who knows who might want to steal an AED machine, what you'd do with it, but it is a possibility, so we think that alarm needs to be on that cabinet, and you can get an alarm with the stroke, or you can get an audible alarm, whatever you want, but what I priced was the audible alarm cabinet.
Okay, so, but it is mobile.
It is very mobile, yes.
And you haven't exhausted your efforts as far as, as a grant, you, there are still some possibilities, so I would ask, uh, Mr. Lewis to amend his motion to purchase one now, and, and give Ms. Ms. Deloach, uh, time to get a grant possibly for another since it's mobile, if he would do so.
Mr. Winters.
Mr. Chairman, I understand that these, the purpose of these two machines is to place one in each of the buildings, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I want to direct this question, if I may, we have a health professional here certainly can speak to it. If this kind of emergency occurs, time is of the essence, isn't it? I don't know if we got time to run the machine and drive it over to another building. I think that we need to buy both of them, but on each building, will you concur, Mr. Street?
I would concur, if you'd...
Mr. Chairman, I think Ms. Lichtenstein can explain all of it together, she knows all about it. Go ahead, go ahead.
Would you like to speak on this, Ms. Lichtenstein?
This machine is self-regulating, uh, it will not shock the patient unless it reads that the patient needs to be shocked, there's no desk work involved, it, the pad that goes on the chest, it tells, uh, where the, the pad, there is a diagram showing you, as well as an audible, is, is it not an audible, uh, uh, message that tells you where to place, and, uh, so there is no desk work in, in this machine at all. It is very portable, uh, once it's used, uh, it needs to go back to the rescue squad for them to download the information, uh, from the machine and to, uh, uh, log it in, so if there's ever any question about the use of that machine at that particular time and date, they can pull it up, they can, uh, it'll have all the recording there.
Any other discussion?
Question on the motion.
We have, just, uh, have a request from Mr. Street, let Mr. Lewis amend his motion.
No, sir, I won't.
Thank you. Mr. Keller, can I touch?
Just one question, I just remembered to be in any charge, but is there a charge to the training?
No.
Okay.
No, I, they would, they would do the, uh, training if, uh, if the person so desired to have training, but it's for use without any training at all, because it is, uh, it tells you, it talks to you, the machine talks and tells you what to do, where to put it, and, uh, when it reads it, then it will shock the patient.
What's the, uh, possibility of continuing to pursue what you have done already and replacing the money that you take from fund balance?
Um, the application is in for Mountain States, that will continue whether we purchase or not, it's already in, um, the Firehouse Sub Grant, we're still going to have to wait on that before we can do anything, but I'll be glad to continue that, and if we could get up to twenty thousand dollars for medical equipment, I think we should do that, um, and then, as Coordinated School Health will get back with me next week, and if she knows of anything, we'll be glad to keep doing that, and just because we purchased them doesn't mean we have to stop looking for money for them.
Right, thank you.
We have a question on the motion. We're in, Tom Rolfe.
Speaker Peters.
Ah.
Nathan Brandt, ah, George Street.
Do I need to read about this part, uh, Mr. Bowers?
I don't think so, I'm purchasing, there's no conflict.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Trivik.
Aye.
Mary Sees.
Aye.
Charles Van Can.
Aye.
Elsie Testor.
Aye.
Steve Lurin.
Aye.
Tom Evans.
Aye.
Joyne Lichtenstein.
Aye.
Charlie Bayes.
Aye.
Bobby Dees.
Aye.
Ian Arden.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonia Cullen.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong, Peggy.
Aye.
And Robert Goff.
It's me.
Yeah.
All ayes.
All ayes, motion taken.
Mr. Chairman, under the nominating committee.
Yes, sir.
I have one item, uh, on the Agriculture Committee, in your folder, you have the list of committees, and, uh, on page, at the bottom, it says two thirteen, uh, finally Agriculture Committee, we need to make one change there, and this is recommended by Keith Hart, that she made, uh, to remove Kathy Campbell, whose term has expired this month, and replace her name with Shirley Buckles. And I make a motion that we do that, and you can make the change in your list, whatever that the date.
I have a, uh, motion by Mr. Sisk, and seconded by Mr. Kye, uh, to replace Kathy Campbell with Shirley Buckles on the Agriculture Board, because Kathy Campbell's term is, uh, in discussions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion taken. Thank you, Mr. Sisk.
Thank you.
Financial Management Committee, Ms. Lichtenstein.
That's a September four commission.
Health Welfare, please.
That's a September four commission.
Uh, Building and Grounds.
Just to report that, we've been with the city officials for a lot of time, I'm talking about, uh, the city officials of U-Town, uh, we know we went beyond our time of contract to tie gifts and losing this, that we should do, we had a meeting, a great executive meeting, uh, with the city officials, uh, then, like, talk with, we went to, uh, turn hours to, to give us an extension on this for back fifteen years, and I guess if you were to do that, if you were to, uh, kind of read off what they, our team was leaving, the draft that you proposed to the city.
Well, based off the vote of the rules of apartment of the Building and Grounds Committee, I advanced a copy of the draft to turn around today, but I've not heard back from turn day at this point, as far as the terms, and, and, and the actual terms itself, the chairman would like to go over those to the agreement, I can, you can do that or I can.
Did you like, did you like the vote?
Sure, sure. It was an extension of time of approximately fifteen months, with the work being done was the, uh, removal of the structure which the Sheriff's Department uses to clean cars and to wash cars and so forth, removal of the steel gate in that area, and I think the sheriff's already taken care of one requirement, which is because some dirt brought in and landscaped that area, so in the meantime, while we're completing the roof project, that would look a little more sightly for the, for the city, and then finally, they wanted, the city was wanting to request that they walk through gate at the edge of the end of parking between the city stop on baseball fields and the county, um, jail and courtroom parking. Is that correct, Mr. Sisk? I believe that was the, that was the items that I was instructed, and I put those into a, just a draft agreement, said those are building ground, but they've been advanced to the city attorney, but I've not heard back from him yet.
I thought, if, if, I thought Chief Street, uh, is, uh, let me hear that, you know, what we have in general?
They're repairing right now, I contacted the state, had communication with them, they give the time schedule, the plan has been ordered, it should be here in about four more weeks, and to repair the generator is almost completed.
Then, least, last but not least, is we've not seen one person from the roof company have a, a, they've not come over there, and there's contract damage for a month, and how it works going on with that. Mr. Mayor, can you hear us?
Yeah, actually, uh, Mr. Deloach and I have met with the reading sites, uh, minded thinking that we would have a preliminary meeting with Judge Walton and all the parties at the jail, I just do not have a date at this time, hopefully that will be next week. I did talk to Robert Brady late last week, and he told me he was doing everything, he finished the work with the contractor and get this, uh, meeting scheduled so that it won't be a surprise to the courts and, and all parties over there.
Mr. Chairman.
There's one other item, uh, Building and Grounds.
What are they?
Mr. Testor, the vote on the Miss Brummette deed, that was, the vote, the Miss Brummette deed that was presented before Building and Grounds Committee. About, the, the deed that was presented for Miss Brummette, Building and Grounds, do you mind if I went over that real quick?
Yes.
Okay. We received a call from Mr. Trudy Brummette, and Miss, uh, Brummette, while executing a quickling deed from her mother to her and her sister, uh, on the form deed, it was, the deed was from a Miss Armada Lovelace, and this goes on the state from the city of, from the city of Milligan, and the grantee, the person receiving the property, is named as Carter County of Trudy Brummette Tammy, uh, Robertson. Now, obviously, the parties intended for the deed to say to Trudy Brummette Tammy Robertson of Carter County, not Carter County of them, so when they went to sell the property, the person doing the title search indicated this is a potential problem, contacted the county as far as that potential ownership, and we obviously have paid no money for this property, and this is not property the county owns, uh, I talked to the title attorney, we presented Building and Grounds, we got a unanimous vote out, Building and Grounds authorized the mayor to execute a deed of correction, back to the individuals, just acknowledging that the county did not purchase this property, and it was not our property. I talked to the individual who was doing the title search for the new purchaser, they indicated if we do that, don't provide these ladies a clear title and help them move on, we don't want to get in their way, and it was just a simple oversight on their part, and, uh, we presented Building and Grounds, I think it received an eight-zero vote there to authorize the mayor to do that, and I'll prepare a deed upon a vote of full commission.
Uh, if everybody's clear on this, the, uh, have a deed correction to Mr. Trudy Brummette for, to, uh, rectify the, the error in this deed, the Building and Grounds Commission, or Committee approved this.
I saw, you need a vote from the fourth.
We do.
I have a motion by Mr. Street, seconded by Ms. Keller to approve this deed correction. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Attorney Bowers, what's this vote, if it's approved, how, what are we looking at for time trying to get this back to these folks because I've been?
Yeah, probably on Wednesday.
Okay, so we've extended?
Yeah, I will bring it down, let you execute it, and Miss Brummette, I told her she can pick up at my office, that's where you got to you.
Right, right.
Any other discussion?
Ms. Bowers, could you speak, you're, like, alone.
You can't turn yours off.
I don't, it may just not be as loud, I'll speak a little louder, I apologize.
Thank you, sir.
Sir.
Any other discussion?
I was trying to speak slower, so I might have gotten louder, I mean, I've been scrolling for the speed, so I slowed down.
All in favor of this deed correction, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion taken. Uh, Highway Committee.
Mr. Chairman, it's, uh, the new chairman of the Highway Committee, uh, I just had an announcement about our next meeting, it will be Tuesday, November the twelfth, at ten a.m. at the Highway Department, and at that time, we'll have a public hearing, uh, to name the access road between Old Bristol Highway and Nineteen E. Four Line, the W.G. Woods Road, and we'll also be adding the Ellis Road to the old horse, to the Carter County Highway Road, so that'll be a public hearing before our regular meeting at ten a.m. on November the twelfth. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I hope it's, it's all right, Mr. Peters, you live to, Street here, uh, about a year ago, Lady Moore, the, uh, Highway Committee and the whole County Commission voted to...
Any questions for the chair? In the other place, I have a report. We have a resolution, the driving school resolution. It's in your pack. You've all read it. Put one second, substitute driving instructor. To have a motion to waive the reading of this...
Second.
On behalf of Mr. Lorant, second by Mrs. Blankenship, to waive the reading. I'll say aye. Now, do I have a motion to approve the resolution? I vote aye. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
I saw the vote, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second by any... Or motion by Mr. Trudy, second by Mrs. Blankenship, to approve this. Any discussion? I'll call over for you.
Peter Peters.
Aye.
All the time. Nathan Bryan. Ha. Scott Street.
Aye.
Nancy Van.
Aye.
Molly Pridge.
Aye.
Mary Sees.
Aye.
Charles Duncan.
Aye.
Donkey Taker.
Aye.
Steve Martin.
Aye.
John Mayer. Joan Blankenship. Hi. Amy Davis.
Aye.
Bobby Dings. Hi. Mr. Norr. Steve Chang. John Lewis.
No.
Sonny Feller. Ha. Mrs. Pat.
Aye.
Scott Sam. Yonchon. Patney.
Aye.
And Dr. Collins.
Aye.
John M. Chang.
Neil Alco.
The law right?
One that...
One motion to carry.
Can I ask Mr. Loach a question, please?
Sure.
You told me one time that all this eighty dollars, that we make out of this hundred dollars on this driving school, with direct young funds. That we didn't pay out nothing with, just with direct young funds. Is that still so?
Yes, sir.
Now, this is all new money coming into the county, about maybe ten percent of all the money.
I don't have a report on that. We'd have to go through the clerk's office over there at the annex to get that report.
Well, most of them have about thirty-five people, about thirty-five hundred dollars.
I know you've pulled the reports multiple times, so I'm sure you have that information.
I don't know what it is, but anyway, varies the number of people, varies from one week to another week. But you say thirty-five people, thirty-five hundred dollars. And we pay out twenty, twenty percent of that. And the rest, we should have a pretty good chunk of money if you're looking at that now.
I can go pull. I don't have that information with me, but we can go put what's been for the year. Yes, sir, I can give you that. Don't have it with me, but I can get you that information.
Can you have it maybe next, next week?
You want what we collected for driving school for fiscal year thirteen, fourteen?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I'd be glad to get you that.
Well, I mean, you know, they're all talking about new money. We've got more money for that. Say, this is all new money coming in, that ain't getting budgeted. It's new money.
No, I think that's where you're wrong. That's part of your budget. It's a budgeted revenue.
Well, now, half, half you go for one week to another week, how much does it take?
The same way, the same way you just quoted, how much was each month? You go off of history and anticipate it.
I don't understand how you convert this up to normal, what's going to mean? Meaning the amount of dollars.
Sir, we don't know if we'll get a dollar of taxes, but we anticipate it.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
I have a county attorney report, please, staff.
Play it.
This month, several research issues completed on behalf of individuals in the county. First, we completed some research concerning historical district zoning requirements. If there were, had some interaction between the mayor and the city on the windows. And Bill Young Grounds asked me to look into that, and we completed our research to make sure there's no governmental exceptions. Also, to make sure that we were, the proper procedures were followed, that we had no other way of going around this committee, just to try to save the county money on the replacement of those windows. And add to Mrs. Blankenship. Contract deal, completed some contract reviews for T-Dot this month. Had some health department employment issues come up. They're still ongoing. Had some research and meetings in connection with those, and that's something the mayor and I are working on together. Completed some research for financial management committee in connection with the school policies. And that's something we have a couple of meetings on, and I think that's probably out of my court at this point. Completed some research this month on franchise requirements and the potential for cable or public service franchises for local or government, county or municipality compared to those requirements for a state. And reaffirmed that to Ms. Culler, and that's something that that's up to individual cable provider. And there's no way we can force them not to use state licensing and take that above our hands. If the county were to have that authority, it would only be for county lines, only not for the city. So, we'd be kind of trying to complete a contract for the donut, leaving out the donut hole, which is what leads to a lot of our issues insofar as why they would go ahead and interact just with the state directly. Attended several county, different committee meetings this month, including landfill, building grounds, law enforcement, things of that nature. Completed contract reviews concerning health department and our interaction between the independent contractor status of some of the employees from the county and state. Worked on several issues for industrial bond board, including the advancement of three or four different pilot agreements. Mr. Anderson, I'm sure, will provide us updates on next month, and continuing working with those and interacting with the attorneys representing each of the different companies. Completed some conflict of interest waiver research, and particularly on Ms. Brown because of being a state employee, and found there's no requirement for a state employee to read the waiver. It's only for a county or municipal employee. Completed the issues on Ms. Brummette's deed and presented those tonight. That's something that will wrap up later this week, based on your vote tonight. Prepared and drafted a draft of the memorandum of agreement for the city concerning the Joe Park extension, and that's been advanced to Attorney Roger Day for his review. Had an initial meeting with Attorney Millwes concerning hiring out the final details of the rescue squad contracts based on the previous resolution in place, and he's given some information that I need to be able to present back to you to get the draft of that ready. Interacted, Mr. Loach and I met and spoke several times this month, and have nailed down a date for our excess property sale, as well as the procedures that we'll follow, and the conflict waiver that we'll have, no, conflict waiver, I'm sorry, liability waiver that we'll have bitter signed. It's something, a very familiar form, or similar form to that used for tax sales. And it's something we use to help protect the county. And we'll have our first of those, and they'll be the first, I hope, of several to come, to get these items back on the tax roll. And completed a couple of issues of research for the records committee this month, and provided that documentation, Mr. Bowers. And now, I do, Chairman Bowers.
Thank you, Mr. Bowers. Any questions for the chair?
Uh, Mr. Bowers?
Yes, sir.
What is the status on the River Town Bridge?
We have got drafts of all the contenders of offer for the right of ways. We're now contacted, we've the best appraiser, probably the only appraiser I know in the area that, and I've tried, I always try to contact appraisers in Elizabethan first, but contacted Mr. Burshfield's office first. And this isn't something they do, and they recommended me over to Mr. Bill Miller in Johnson City, who I've used before. Mr. Miller is probably the leading appraiser in the area by our, and respected by our circuit court judges for appraising right of ways. Mr. Miller will provide us with appraisal of those two right of ways, so we can, we can then put our tender and ask for possession of those upon filing the case, and then we'll immediately set a hearing just for possession. Now, the issue of damages may go on for quite some time, but what we'll try to do is go and get a court order for possession. That'll clear the road department and start the construction.
I just asked you to ASA claim if you're going.
I heard you there, not, sir, and I will.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mayor.
I did have a question. I know last month, we did talk briefly about the EMS contract, and I thought that time we were, would have one in hand today, a draft or something, but that's not the case. Can you give us an update as far as the status of that contract?
Sure.
And where we're at for that?
Had a very pleasant meeting with the attorney for the rescue squad, and he is providing a list of all services that we provide as part of the contract, within the current resolution you already had in place. But the idea of the need of a contract has got kicked around, and I know the auditors want it on both sides, so we're going to draft something that's pretty simple, with a hundred and twenty day provision that was voted on in here as far as for cause for termination, and then a complete list of all the searches they're providing. Attorney Millwes is together, and I have far me and Sincere about it in my office, and I'm going to draft.
Any other questions for county attorney?
What amount of property we're going to sell? What's the status on the two pieces of property?
We worked with that. Ms. Loach and I worked with that as far as we've got a date scheduled, and we've already scheduled the date. We're working on the waiver. We're going to use one very similar to the one used for the county tax sales to protect the county for liability. And now, hopefully, the first sale, and since we do those two, we'll start moving on to others.
What's, what's process? Do you auction it off or take the interim?
Auction it.
Okay.
Hopefully, many people show up and pay a lot of money. And, and it's a double, you know, it's a double win for the county. You not only get the funds from the sale, but you're getting back on the tax rolls, essentially anonymity.
Any other questions for county attorney? Commission comments?
Senator. Going back to Debbie's, I'd like Mr. Blankenship to explain the liability for the use of this facility.
I think that would have to be for the county attorney, the way, what I had read in the law that was passed in Nashville. That is kind of like the Good Samaritan Act.
I mean, there's always, always a potential for a lawsuit on anything a county does. Anything an individual does, getting out of bed and coming to work in the morning, you've got a potential for a lawsuit. It may strike someone hard. The potential for the use of these, these machines, these machines, I, when I was asked to look into this by Mrs. Blankenship, the first thing I did was contacted a couple of local doctors who are used, used these before. I talked to a couple EMS people who've used these, and I talked to the county attorney where these things have already been installed. To tell you there's no liability, of course, there's liability. We could always been in a lawsuit. As long as we keep the batteries, you know, updated, we keep a, we get someone assigned with the county to keep them maintenance, then the risk of liability compared to the benefit of saving a life is, is just so minimal. I don't, it's really just not a key issue in the discussion. I mean, there's liability in everything we do. There's liability that if we had the simple two thousand dollars, we could put these things in, and we didn't. I have to name this for a lawsuit in that, if I want to decide. I mean, there's liability either way you go. I'd rather try to save someone and take our chance.
Mr. Aron?
Second item. These railroad right of ways, the railroad banks, where they're taking at these tracks and cross ties and everything, they're all over roads. They're impassable. You can't use them. I don't know why, but Wyoming, Kansas City loans them, or Johnson City. But they need to be cleaned up.
Would you like the county attorney to pursue that, see who is a lead on or does now, believe Johnson City?
I think these need to be cleaned up and re-rund. Actually, those tanks and pieces of ties supposedly were removed by last, last October. It wasn't this October. But anyway, it's back.
Chairman.
I, I settled the rails for the community. I know they're working on that. Johnson City does own it. They're cleaning it up, all the way through the six more shows. Trying to get that open within a year, as much as I know, but making it really good. County attorney is probably going to do it. I, I know, but I don't want to have to try to get that open by, within a year, not two six more shows.
Mr. Bowers.
I think it changes, made you to sweep up over the camp.
Free retreat. Make the run, camp.
What I've got to say is important enough to come to the microphone. I listened to the last month's commission meeting on the internet. And I might add that this is a distinguished looking group. Some of you are even photogenic. But I listened to it twice, four hours and some minutes each. And I detected something that, that's a little bit distressing. A lot of talking, holding your hand in front of you while you talk. Not that that's any indication that you shouldn't do that. That's the chairman's problem, not mine. Anyway, the... I know that, that there's many items that I've thought of in the last thirty-some days of trying to get over a knee surgery. I only want to go along one. The removal of Commissioner Scott Samson from the Budget Committee. This organization, this legislative body, supposedly is a body of gentlemen and ladies. Much like the United States Senate. However, there's a lot of game playing going on. And if you don't believe me, I can prove some of it. I would advise all of you that are doing this to back off. Because it's not good for democracy. It's not good for our county. It's absolutely the wrong way to conduct business. The removal of Commissioner Scott Samson may turn out to be more disruptive than we first thought. We were on the surface told that his attendance kept him from representing people in his district. I spent several hours, and I think Amherst would verify that I've been twice, looking at records. And what I found in those two different occasions, I went back to make sure I was right the second time. Because there's no use to get your facts out there and have them all over your face. And I don't like to do that. Only one commissioner attended all thirty-five meetings of the Budget Committee. That would be you, Mr. Chairman.
That's why I get the lead.
I also noted with interest that one member who left early turned in a paper saying he did not want to accept any pay. How many times have some of us left early? But nobody I saw, at least on the Budget Committee, had requested no pay. I thought that was very admirable, this gentleman. Keep in mind, the record shows that Mr. Samson missed two meetings and had no one fill in for him. I didn't know myself that there was such a ruling, but there is. On page one thirty-nine, Book Fifteen, in the Mayor Goode's office, it says that if a commissioner is missing, he can ask another commissioner in the same district to fill in for him. If I'm not mistaken, and I know I'm not mistaken, I've seen people fill in for others, and they were not in the same district. Now, if you want to challenge me on that, go ahead. Anyway, missed two meetings, didn't fill in. I didn't know about this fragment, but I did prove it was right in nineteen eighty-three. As a side note, we could have received better training as new commissioners. In nineteen, in same Book Fifteen, nineteen eighty-two, nineteen eighty-five, starting on page one thirty-three, for several pages, this would be well the copy and give to every new commissioner because it tells you what's expected of you. I didn't know. We had some voluminous manuals that we may or may not read. I didn't know. We had some voluminous manuals that we may or may not have read. Getting back to my attendance survey, one commissioner missed five meetings. Keep in mind, Mr. Sams missed two. Two of these meetings had no fill-ins, and three did. The Budget Committee Chairman had one absence. He didn't have anybody to fill in for him. I could have, Mr., and in the third district, Mr. Trivik could have. So...
Where, where are you going with this, Mr. Black?
Another tactic.
Mr. Black?
Yes.
Where are you going with this?
I'm, I'm headed in your direction, sir.
All right.
If you'll disbelieve. Another tactic stated that the commissioner who received the highest votes could be seated on one of three supercommittees. This tactic was not new. It was used in eighty-three. It was used in eighty-nine. The best version simply stated as to why this happened was that the two commissioners did not like how the third commissioner voted on his absence. The two commissioners can remove legally the third one. Now, let's use some names in this area. Let's say that myself and the other third district commissioner did not like the current budget chairman's stance on issues. We could, based on Mr. Sams' removal, based on, place that the Budget Committee, this would be, this would be horrible. The budget chairman has spent thirty-two years on this commission. Thirty-two years of public service, and probably more years as a teacher, a coach, and a school administrator. On a personal note, he gave me a job when I needed one. And he knows that. I desperately needed a job.
Mr. Black.
What if I propose?
Mr. Black.
What if I propose?
Please sit some more.
What if I propose, sir, that Mr., what if I propose that, that I wanted to see Mr. Trivik on the Budget Committee? And then I would say, I recline, Mr. Black.
Black, but I will vote for you. You'll accept.
Then I would accept.
Next September, you'll have that opportunity. Mr. Lorant.
I'd like to refer to things that Mr. Black was talking about, the rules by laws.
Have a motion to refer this to the Rules by Law Committee. Have a say.
Say.
Second by Mr. Chang. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
That was not be a voting item for the co-commission, sir.
Have a motion, Mr. Byers. Mr. Black, have a say.
Say.
From Mr. Chang, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?